What?
I'm tired of this, this virus stuff. I've got all of it, I'm gonna take, move to Europe. There you go.
I said we're live, wave at whoever we see. Good evening.
Good, I'm glad we're live.
We are live.
Can't find my brownie.
No, um, I don't have any on my desk, but I'm sure I can get you another one.
I'll be alright.
Just let me know. Had to wear my Cowboys mask today because of Dr. Ruda.
Oh wow.
You know, you guys are Chiefs fans. Oh, you just had the Texans this week, so. Just, just.
They usually have our number up. Now the best team is Dallas, too. Nobody can argue with that. I don't know, I just have a problem with them patronizing that guy that got shot that was a criminal rapist.
Oh, football, you mean?
Yeah. What about his victims?
Was just all kinds of things. All kinds of goodies to put on top of it. I don't know if everybody would like everything, so.
How are you?
I'm good, and yourself?
I'm doing great.
Thanks, Mother Nature's confused.
They need to go out to the, you know, that, that, Dragon Express. I had a heck of a time getting mine done, and the kind of knot they tie in it, all she gotta do is pull one up and it opens.
And it opens?
It's the way they open the knot.
Look at how much snow.
I don't know if it'll be that much, it's still warm on the ground.
Yeah, I think it'll step up on the mountains, but I don't think it'll stick. Well, that report is wonderful, thank you, sir.
Get it out of the way.
You saved me from taking my notes on this, so I can just type from that.
Whatever, whatever.
That's awesome. Miss Beth does that for me, too.
Tonight, not much.
I didn't figure it would be.
So I, you can just send my sheet.
Oh, no, I can, I can write this, it's my job. That's a lot of cheese, isn't it? Sophie just eats that stuff instead of.
How's her school going?
Really good, she loves school. Yeah, she loves school. The dog of ours is growing.
Really?
What is feet mixed up? I think a golden retriever, retriever. And it must be a standard pool then.
Yeah. Yeah, don't really know, but. It's not, you see, I think golden eagles are a little less hyper than.
This, this is how, this dog is huge already. She's not even four months old. I don't know what's going on. What is she, the puzzle the next word? She is a quarter college.
Whatever you want.
Hi, everybody. Hello, how are you? Good. Are you not eating?
I have my dessert, I like my dessert. So my dinner is down there, I'll eat it when we get home.
Well, that's a great one.
It was good. Remember my potato, last, everything is individual in there, so.
Hello.
Hello.
Maybe somebody was watching their weight, and it went, put the sour cream on and butter and. Yeah, I strapped my little back. Yeah, I told them to go around the back, yeah, yeah. So much slow, ready in there.
I was gonna say, she's getting good, she's.
That's what she said, she's getting really good.
That's so funny, that's what. We got hair, got so long, and I said, wow, they must have thought we were having a salad.
Well, I hadn't opened my bag yet, and salad was in there. But she came back, she said, oh, I have these. Oh, wonderful.
Good, you.
So, okay, so I'll look at his dates and see if Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, one better. Alright, then you're free, alright? Okay. I'll look at his calendar, hold his study at a certain day, a certain time.
That'll work.
Then nobody gets confused.
Well, you can't say that.
Can we get some sesame oil? I got it, okay, I'm a teeth person, too. Like, there's no public comments tonight.
Okay.
Nice.
Let's do the United Way meeting tonight, under an hour.
Those could get long.
They, Deb's birthday, too.
Yeah, it is, I did see that.
I saw that. Reminder, the tour is afterwards tonight, if you guys can do that.
Yeah, I've already seen everything.
That's what I thought. But Ally's giving the tour this time. Little bubbly Ally. Like, I have you, and I'm gonna have to look at it and talk to you about it, I know that he's gonna want you on his blog.
Oh.
So I'll try to go over dates with you and see what's best for your schedule. We usually film Thursdays at 2:30, but that kind of affects your schedule.
I can make it work as long as it's ahead of enough schedule or something, I can just take a later lunch or something.
I'll give you some dates, and then you can text. They're so good, I just take my cobbler and left the rest. Walking pretty good.
Yeah, it's still pretty ugly.
No, it is not, that actually looks good. We watched the E60 on Alex Smith last night, looking at your knee compared to it, did you watch?
His leg, I, I've seen about his leg, I just, I don't know how he was gonna even.
Oh, you should watch it, it is so inspirational and.
I graduated today.
Alex Smith.
I graduated today, though, I'm down to two physical therapies a week.
It'd be interesting for you, too, Marilyn, it just.
What surgery did he have?
He shattered like every bone, like tibia, fibula, and femur, and his leg, they took like skin graft, and like, I mean, it's. Yeah.
What happened to him?
He got sacked, I don't know, just.
They just saw the bottom of his leg, just.
Not as a cheap, he was playing for.
But it was a compound fracture, and it ended up hitting off.
It was.
But just to watch it, and it was inspiration how he just worked so hard, then. Just to watch how the trainers worked with him, as in, you know, his rehab was playing football, dropping back into the pocket, going back and forth, it's just very, it's just amazing. Hi. Can you go sweep through there? I'm just joking, though, we can move the table.
Some negotiations.
Sunflower seeds.
Early fall this year, huh?
Sir.
It is.
As long as it doesn't freeze tonight.
I have a cousin from Wheatland, Wyoming, that has six inches of snow.
Yeah, they're getting a foot of snow up in the mountains right now.
What did Jeff Denver wear, like a hundred and something yesterday and today?
Yeah, I'm not ready for the snow. Weather, yeah.
We, um, didn't we hear from Shanda?
She is out of town.
Okay, well, she said there was a possibility, but then she never got back to me, and then I answered if she could zoom.
She's gonna try to zoom, but she's driving.
Okay.
So she's not sure how this service will.
Okay.
An article on Dr. Fry in the paper. Seen that there, not only one years, that's pretty impressive. Give me a, hello? I saw it, I had to go.
Yeah, they're very expensive, too. I ordered some, but they're child's size. So I thought, I don't know if she would wear them or not, but I don't know, she might, I'll lie for it.
Well, there's a whole five dollars, so.
Shelley's middle school in liberal. If the kids, if they have to be sent home, like, and they're waiting for the parents to pick them up, well, there's a, there's, they don't call it a quarantine room, they call it something else, but she has to take her turn, every little whip stitch. And they've got her in a haznet suit, almost an advent, and they've got her, not only the mask, but the shield. She says, you can hardly see, but it's so funny, because the kids laugh at her. She ordered something, and it's got cancer up there, and of course, the whole thing they're doing is be kind, so it says, your counselor says, be kind.
Yeah, for all this year, you wish you could buy a stop in plastic glass.
Oh, yeah.
Well, just the, just the, um, items have been made since this whole.
Toilet paper?
Problem I have is the figures. When you see, I saw one today where somebody posted that their mother got a letter from the health department saying that she was positive.
Right.
That she died seven months ago and is remated, and they took the test on the, a week or two before they sent out the letter. And you see so many of those, and you wonder, what is this?
Yeah, where's the truth at?
Well, then that report from CDC, whatever, it says there's almost 7,000 dead, that's right.
Clint's gonna do deer?
Yeah. Yeah, he said he's, he's gonna do that there this year, so.
Just because all the, well, all the markets are places are, good luck on getting them in, yeah.
Yeah, he typically hasn't done that.
I was gonna say, he can get them.
Maybe some of the money that he's lost when he was closed down there.
So they're just gonna do it themselves here, I mean, just, because he doesn't usually, well, I guess, he processes, he just can't kill, he can't do a kill and everything.
So basically, what he'll do, and then they'll have to have the people hang him.
Yeah, get them ready.
Yeah. I mean, like, bronze.
Oh, they're booked out, yeah, you better get it a year before. We usually just do our own, but.
Well, and he's, I mean, he's got. You know, he can do strips, he can do jerky strips.
That's, yeah.
Still experimenting with the strange flavors.
Yeah. He's got ghost pepper, broth, he's got, uh. New Mexico green chili, uh, broth, he has. The hatch green chili, summer sausage is good.
It is really good, yeah. I haven't been brave enough to try the ghost peppers more well. Olive canals are nice, hot as I can get, I think. Not stretching.
We got some, uh, I got some. Pepper jerky from Bucky's down in.
Oh, yeah.
Man, that's so hot, but it's so good, it's like, you can have like, one little bit of it, and you start just, almost, you almost start like hiccuping, you know, I mean, just, you know, and, and. The nice thing is, you get a pound of it, and it lasts you for just forever, because I mean, you just barely can eat a little bit of it without being so hot.
Yeah.
Like, food is not supposed to.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's pretty hot, I, like I said, I, it gets me to, well, but the only thing that goes good with is beer, so. I will say that. Yeah.
Are those those big, like, gas stations?
Yeah, like, fifty, fifty gas stations, so all, and they got everything in them.
And they're so clean.
They're so clean, yeah, they're just, and I mean, like that one, they put that one in, uh, there's one.
Go get another water, absolutely.
There's one in Denton.
You want me to get it for you?
And it's got like, I, I could walk at one.
Okay.
It's got like thirty car wash station off to the side, I mean, it's just like, it's unbelievable how big those, I just can't imagine the cost of putting one in, but they are, they're always clean, their bathrooms are always clean, you never have, I mean, you know, it's just.
Yeah, they're all over the place here, actually.
Yeah.
Still grizzling out?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's cold out there.
I think it got colder through the day.
Yeah, tomorrow's almost supposed to be.
I think it's supposed to, I think it's supposed to drizzle and rain the rest of this evening until tomorrow.
Trip over that.
We're predicting we get seventy-five to inch and a quarter this whole week here.
Oh, really? It's just as long as.
Different rains.
As long as it doesn't freeze, I don't care.
That's not supposed to.
I know, but I don't need to, I don't need to even get close to it.
Green spring system, there you go.
And, and well, next week is supposed to be in the seventies, eighties, so.
Weekend, eighties?
Yeah.
Nineties? Ground is still there, I think. If it freezes, you got all that extra meat, don't you?
Keeps, keeps me a little busy.
Following and twisting their back.
I got it.
Yeah, those are hard to get open.
I was, I was just reading the label. I remember last year, not this year, but for the auction, she put that in there, and our guys, you know, we had it on the, on a, just on the table, and my gosh, people were just bidding like crazy to get the labels for their parties and stuff. From Shepner's. Well, now that I took off my hat, it gets real boy.
How are you feeling?
Not bad, I could, I still can't wear pants, I mean, they don't, I mean, it has to be shorter.
Not a good day for that.
Still kind of ugly.
Feeling up to the air, though, yeah.
You're a doctor.
Yeah. That's right, just play one.
No, I think he really is good, he said, I mean, I know he is, Dr. Moran.
Yeah.
But, yeah, because I had this one done in Kansas City in 2014, because I had somebody that I could stay there with then. And so, yes, and I swore I'd never have the other one done after this one, because the denting stuff on my bot, you know, it's supposed to work for eighteen, twenty-four hours. I, they just had thrown me in the recovery room, and it was gone, so, anyway.
See, Buffalo Wild Wings is doing a season pass of wings for, it's not a bad deal, it's for the football season, so it starts Thursday. Goes through the end of December for regular season, once a week, you get ten wings, it's ninety dollars, it's over $200 value.
Wow.
Yeah.
Ten wings a week.
Ten wings a week, Monday, it's happening Monday through Thursday, that's the only reason we're not doing it, Teresa and I usually go on Friday afternoon after, after work, at lunchtime, and we'll just share like ten wings and, and a salad or whatnot, but they won't let you do it, they won't let you get it Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, so you have to do it Monday through Thursday, so, but still, it's a pretty good deal.
Pretty good deal.
And you can order them to go, you don't have to, you don't have to dine in or anything, yeah. Yeah, that's a pretty good deal. I don't know, after.
They're on that board, eh?
What's that?
They are.
They are on board, eh?
Yeah, after we won that, from the auction, the previous year, you know, we ordered, we got the fruit, or the wings for a year, and it was a order, I mean, it was like a ten-piece wings for every, every week of the year, and then four, like, party platters. We got so sick and tired of wings. After, I mean, it was, it was like, aw, man, we, we were just giving them away after a certain point, too.
I, I, uh.
Buffalo Wild Wings aren't bad, but.
I, I was helping the real men, real leaders, restructure their stuff, and, uh, so I would buy, they buy the, the rib things from the, or some of them do, and then I buy their chances on that. He brought me in, we had our last meeting, he said, hey, you won, he said, you won't believe what you won, and I said, what, I win, and he said, a tie, and I said, oh, great. Anyway, he brought me in four boxes to choose from, and the first thing you look at is the little sticker on the outside, $280, they're pure silk and made in Paris, and I guess it's, it's, uh. Anyway, yeah, he said, so he let me pick out, and I thought, okay, I'll, I'll palm it off on my son-in-law, who very seldom wears ties, and maybe one of his sons can talk him out, but it is beautiful, but I'm thinking, who in the heck would pay $280 for a tie?
Wow, so, so, I think it's real important.
But it was Tim Cruz, his brother-in-law, he said sells these.
Wow.
My son-in-law will take one look of it and say, oh, thanks.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys had seen the news there about Independence Community College, they have a football player in the stadium, but I guess they have a lake outside of Independence, several football players have gone and swam in this lake last week. One of the kids on the ground. So they have counselors on their campus here.
My granddaughter was one, she got positive at K-State.
Oh, no, she's a cheerleader, no, yeah. Yeah, I think she told me.
Does she have symptoms much now?
She's asymptomatic.
Yeah.
That's what you hear a lot there.
No, she lives in an apartment with two other roommates. We talked to her, yes, while texting, she's just staying in her room, trying to stay away from.
Has all, how's her classes, I've, I've heard a lot of, like, especially K-State, they've transitioned a lot to online anyways.
Yeah, she only has one.
One on campus.
On campus class. And then to practice.
That's tough.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's most of them still party.
Oh, yeah.
That's why his friends.
Yeah, she still likes it.
Yeah.
What year is she?
Freshman's.
Yeah, they've had, they've had, I mean, she, well, I think Hayes has the highest percentage.
Really?
Which, and Hayes jumped up quite a bit. Which South State had, had quite a few come through, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah, they've had quite a few. Pretty similar to what we did here when they tested everybody in the dorms.
Yeah. I've got five fifty-nine. Everyone ready? Six here?
I'm just gonna see if I can.
Pull it.
Hot spot this.
Do we have Shanda's thirteen twenty-one? Is that Shanda or do we know?
You have Shanda's cell number.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't want my computer.
Just didn't know if that two nine zero was hers. Yep, it is.
It is. Oh, six two oh two nine zero, I'm sorry.
Can we get, ask you, can you get Andrew to put her on like?
Andrew? Six two oh two nine zero. Thank you, sir.
Are you good, Marilyn? No, okay.
I thought you meant area code was two nine zero.
No, just give her a pass area code.
I can't.
Asking you about your extended warranty.
Hello?
Hi, Shanda. We're, we're.
I'm here.
Hello, we're gonna get started here in just a few minutes, okay?
All right, I'm, we're, we're traveling and we're up by Norton now, so if I lose you guys, I, I'm sorry. I'll try to dial in as my service allows.
Okay.
I think I got it.
Okay, everyone ready? Okay, I have six oh one, and we're gonna go ahead and get started with the September eighth. Garden City Community College Board of Trustees meeting, and since we're still doing meetings by Zoom and call-in. We'll go ahead and do a roll call real quick. This is Blake, present.
Marilyn Douglas, present. Beth Tedrow, present.
David Robb, present. Leonard Pitts, present.
Shanda Smith, present by phone.
Okay, perfect. Okay, as far as I've got, I don't have a whole lot other than. I know Dr. Ruda will probably go over a little bit more, but. Last numbers that we got, shout out to the administration and everyone on campus, looking like we're doing pretty good in enrollment. We jumped up quite a bit. And he can kind of divulge into that, but that's looking really good compared to what we were anticipating and, and also. Just a hats off to the entire administration staff, faculty for keeping up continuing efforts of keeping. Kids reduced risk and, and tracking system for COVID nineteen and coronavirus. It's, I know we've had a few cases, but we've been able to identify and, and certainly have not had the outbreaks like. Some of the other universities and colleges around the, the state. I. Think I had something else, but. It eluded me, so. I can't really think of anything else. Boy, I'm sure there is something. Oh, well, if I think about it, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, time in, but anyways. Onto, we're not gonna do it, oh, oh, I remember now. Okay, so, so employees, Dr. Ruda and I had, had a meeting this morning and. One of these, one of these, maybe next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do a. New employees from back from June, some of the coaches, things like that, we're gonna try to do a Zoom where they come into a holding area and introduce themselves and we can, we can get to know them. But we're kind of behind on those and obviously don't really want to bring in exposure to. To a confined area. And then just to follow up, as of last board meeting, there was some, some questions or concerns about. When we possibly would be going back to a live. Board meeting and. We obviously have some concerns, but, and certainly we do want to get back to those live meetings. I had Dr. Ruda go ahead and use the criteria that we used on all of our rooms. Based on the square footage and also. Other factors, but basically use that same criteria for the boardroom meeting area. And after figuring that, plus the administration that needs to be there, board members that need to be there. For media and for security and whatnot, basically it comes out to be where there's what, two, maybe three people that could be in there. And that's, you know, so, so without trying to do that, plus then taking all the fact that we need to sanitize clean and also keep trying to keep people from off-campus. On to campus, only for the fact that we're trying to minimize exposure to the students and keep students safe and, and for this time being, I think this is just still. In, in the best efforts and making sure that people can still come and zoom in and, and listen in. I just think this is the appropriate thing for right now until we get a true understanding. If anybody disagrees, I mean, I'd like said, we're still holding the meetings live and we're still trying to make it available to everyone, but. You know, only limiting to one or two people in there doesn't really necessarily. Include everyone, so anyone have a concern? Okay, I just, like I said, I just, we did, we did follow up on that and I do want to, we'll, we'll keep everyone apprised. And then the last thing is, it's, it's on the upcoming calendar dates, but everyone should know, September nineteenth and twentieth, it's not this weekend coming up, but the following weekend. The nineteenth and twentieth, we do have the Board of Trustees retreat eight AM on, on Saturday and then follow up on Sunday for just a little bit. So we'll have that and that will also be zoomed live so that people can certainly. Chime in and listen if they would like to and it will be available as well afterwards, so. Okay, so on to, on to other things. The consent agenda. Anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda to discuss?
I'd like B.
Okay. Anybody? Item D, line item D.
Yes. For grant writer.
Anyone else would like anything?
Yeah, this is Marilyn. I'd like to just discuss. Negotiated agreement.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else? Can I get an approval for the remaining items? A, B, C, E.
This is Beth. I move we approve all the items on the consent agenda with the exception of D and F.
Further discussion?
Yes, second, the motion.
Okay, Beth, motion, Marilyn, second. All those in favor for the consent, approval of consent agenda, A, B, C. And E with discussion of D and F, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and we'll do a roll call on this. This is Blake, aye.
Marilyn, aye. Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move into item D, the approval of the grant writer. David, you have a question or concern about it or just a little bit more information?
I'd just like a little bit more information on, they have a question.
Page is that on in there?
Thirty-three. Thirty-three.
Yeah, everybody's turning to it there, so. This is a, this is a grant writing agency that is actually utilized as a college in the past for Title V grant. We're in the process of, we've been looking at a variety of different grants. There's the one that we're specifically targeting on this particular one is a. Title III grant there is, that is for expanding serving institutions specific to STEM, your science, technology, engineering, and math. Specifically on this there then, just because federal grants are such a. An intricate way that you have to write them, really being able to have the connections for. Identifying and being specific to the priorities and the competitive priorities within the federal grants. It's important to be able to. Have somebody who can help navigate the waters specifically with muscle and associates who we've identified, so. This is one that we, again, we've had prior experience with. She's very reputable. Her firm is, is very well connected at the, at the federal level. The other thing that I would say is when you go after these federal grants, if you are awarded, one of the things that you definitely want to make sure you have access to is somebody that can help with the. As well as the closeout at the end of the five-year period. And so this, this particular firm is very well vested in, in helping those that they write the grants for. To stay on throughout the entirety of the grant cycle, help with the annual reporting, help with closing out the grants and meeting all the federal guidelines on that as well, which is. Very important when it comes to the specifics that come with the federal grant.
Could you tell me again what it's specifically directed towards? I, I don't understand what Title III HSI and STEM mean.
Hispanic.
Yeah, so HSI is Hispanic serving, so any institution that is above the twenty-five percent. Threshold as far as students of Hispanic origin that are enrolled at their institution qualify for Hispanic serving experience. And then the STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math.
Got you.
I know the. As Dr. Ruda and I were talking about this, you know, the twenty-five hundred dollar upfront fee is a pretty small amount. You know, having somebody even dedicate their time. On campus to writing such a grant. You couldn't, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars gets ate up pretty fast, so obviously they're working on their. In their hopes of, of getting the percentage of, of the. Of the grant if it's obtained and, and while that can be significant in a five million dollar grant. It's still, it's still a pretty easy, small cost of, of upfront and also a small cost of even giving to the. To their organization or to their, their group for doing, like I said, and then doing the follow-up. And making sure that we're state current, so we're not having to have any problems with the grant and, and, and the requests, and so.
When you compare it, this is Beth, when you compare it to the fact that if we would not get one or we can't get one renewed, which happened. In one of our trio programs because it was not written well, I mean, this is, it sounds expensive, but it is very inexpensive. When you realize what you lose, because once you lose them, it's very, very difficult to get them back. And you're on national competition here.
Yeah.
I have no problem with it all.
Yeah, the, like I said, the twenty-five hundred dollars is when you start factoring in somebody to just work on it, if you pull somebody. That even had time or bring on a part-time person to do it, I mean, it just, like I said.
This particular grant, this particular grant competition is for a five-year, five million dollar grant, so million dollar a year, five years. So again, I mean, the significance of it there would help move the needle quite a bit there just on, on STEM programming and also helps cover. Bringing on some new programs, construction, personnel, things at the end as well.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with grants. I just wanted to double check and commend you guys for going after them, but I also know that at times there is a. Percentage that we have to provide, you know, sometimes it's like seventy, thirty and matching grants and stuff like that. And I guess the other question is knowing, working with an agency that got federal grants. The reporting issue and keeping up with everything monthly and is that can require another person to help our luck.
Well, it'll be included in the, we'll have a, we'll write a project manager into the grant. Because there's no way, I mean, that's just setting yourself up to fail to. At that level of, because it's not just only the money, you know, it's, it's managing all the outcomes, et cetera, and quarterly reporting and.
Motley and boardly and.
So.
I'd say when I worked at the city, yeah.
It's gotta be written in.
Paying right in those grants and it does take special, special on. Different type of grants. When I wrote, I just paste and copy and paste from last year's, but.
Right.
But it still was a pain, so. When we enter into this, you're really entering into a contract, is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, the other, the other side of this there is, is really the compressed timeframe that we're looking at there. This particular grant, when we do in early spring, twenty twenty. So. Looking at essentially a four-month timeframe for us to be able to pull together a grant, which is why you want to be able to have somebody that can help connect the dots and. Know how it is that we need to write for those specific priorities as well.
And this is for how many years?
It's gonna be a five year.
Okay, could you please, in the third paragraph, the fourth paragraph, I explain to me what. Continue with the three more funding cycles under the conditions and so on. Explain to me this paragraph, please.
Yeah, so one of the things that, you know, I would consider to be a strong point there of this particular agency as well is. You know, she credits herself on being able to work with brands that are going to fund. Every year, the Department of Education comes out with new grant competitions. This particular paragraph speaks to the fact that if, if this particular grant is not funded. That we would stay on with her and use, use her for consecutive funding grant competitions. So if there are new grant competitions come out in twenty twenty-one, we would utilize her there as well there to be able to still work towards being able to get a funded federal grant there.
And that wouldn't be any additional cost to us.
Other than the percentage.
Right.
You said we haven't used her before. We used her for the Title V grant and we used her for the nursing. Do you know who this external evaluator is at this time? Is that somebody on staff here on campus?
No, no, we. She has external evaluators that work for her agency, so essentially what we're doing is writing into the proposal of the grant, we use an external evaluator. Somebody that comes out on site and gets hands on there to make sure that we're following federal purchasing guidelines.
And they recommend that person, correct?
Yeah, so again, it's, I mean, what you're paying for is the experience, who you're paying for is the individual that has a connection to. To know a lot of the intricate details of what it is that these grant competitions are looking for.
No, less would know. But their payment is a six percent of each. Basically, if it's five million dollars, they get six percent of the five million.
Correct.
Probably still be cheaper hiring somebody or something.
Yeah, and she has thirty-seven years of experience. She's actually from Fort Scott and. Her husband was the city manager there and he retired early and went to work for his wife. And she's got a pretty big staff.
Like I said, this is what they do. I mean, you know, you put somebody that knows what they're doing and knows how to go get that money and. I mean, it's just, like you said. It's in writing those things, you just have to have those connections and you just, over thirty-seven years, I mean, again. We look at, like I said, that percentage and it's like, well, taking, you know, sixty thousand out of every year, but it's. It's a small, it's a small fee really, when you're still getting five, you know, a million dollars, you know, I, I take that investment any day, so.
And those, those fees are paid quarterly.
That is correct.
Now, could you explain to me the next paragraph?
Now, could you explain to me the next paragraph?
So essentially it's saying that the, the content, what we write for, which is why I don't really want to go into detail as far as the programs and what it is that we're writing for, but specifically what we write into this grant will be exclusive to our agreement between this agency and the college.
34, thanks.
She cannot share outside of public information or knowledge with any other institution that she may be working with. There are most people included in order. Colleges. So it's exclusive to what it is that our agreement is with her on what it is that we're writing.
Well, I have to admire you all for, for all of these grants that you're going after. I think that's something that we need to be doing. I have no problem with this at all. But I wanted to make sure I understand when we enter into a contract for five years, I want to understand what we're entering into. And I rely on you and, and your staff, Ryan, but if there's more of these out there, we need to be going after them. I think we are.
Correct.
We're not rich at this point in time.
This is, this is.
We need all the help we can get.
This is one of about six that we clearly are applying for or have applied for here.
And, you know, I've said many times, my idea for Garden City Community College is to be the shining light at the top of the hill. And I think these are the things that we need to be doing to put us up there, shining light at the top of the hill. And I commend you on doing this. It's just that there are certain things in there that I did not understand that I wanted to understand before I vote on it.
Sure. Good. Anybody else? No? No. Clears up? Yep. Okay. And then we'll go on to item F, the negotiated agreement. And Amy had passed out a little, just a little summary of changes of the negotiated agreement. Not a whole lot has changed from last year, but you can see where those edits and definitions were changed. But questions or, or comments?
I like the fact that the agreement was easier to clear it up. So there should be no questions since they agreed to it.
Yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of time spent on, through the days, you know, cleanup items, you know. More understanding on both sides on some items.
I did observe one of the meetings here with, between Randy and faculty and it's good to have Randy in there because he, he hears, he understands and takes everything into consideration.
Yeah. Having said on other negotiation teams, it truly does make a big difference.
Oh, it has in the past when, since Randy got on. The past administration, maybe having problems. Faculty was.
Well, it's nice not to have the instruction VP or the president involved. Although they, especially with the addition of Mark, there were a lot of, you know, things that were considered with input from Mark and the deans. So.
This is Marilyn. I had a question in regards to the negotiated agreement. So first of all, I want to say I like the, the the fact that the salaries remain the same and I appreciate the negotiation of the faculty for consenting to that. My question has not to do with changes, but with the page 21 of the negotiated agreement, the group health care benefits. And I think between the two of you, I just wanted to know if you could explain how that's still working, how many people are, this is involving. What do you, how, I know this has been kind of a source of unpredictability for us as to how many people would be in this group, getting health insurance and for how long? How long we're going to continue that service?
Well, I don't have the, it's roughly, I don't actually have the numbers off the top of my head.
That's okay.
But, um, you know, one of the things that we, that is from a budget standpoint that is beneficial here is that our contribution is very predictable as far as it's a set amount per employee versus, you know, a percentage of the premium. When we do budget, when we put the budget together, we do budget the full benefit for every employee. So that we aren't caught by surprise with the anticipation that all of the, all of the employees will take advantage of that. I would say around 180 off the top of my head, take advantage of the, of the benefits. This year we were able to, we, we, the last two years, we bought down and kept the premiums flat with our reserves. So this was the third year going into that. And so initially, what was presented was a significant increase to, it would be to the employees. So we negotiated and kept that at just a 10% increase, which in a year when we weren't increasing the compensation, that, you know, that was, wasn't an ideal situation, but we felt like we needed to bite off a little bit of that because every year that you don't, you know, absorb some of that increase, the next year it's going to even be more. So.
Are you talking specifically on the retirement?
I think.
I'm talking about retirees.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So we have 180 that are participating in the health insurance right now.
Right. On the retirees.
Retirees, yeah.
I thought that, I mean, I, I think in the past, what the list is like 15 to 20, wasn't that on there or is, has that grown?
It's not that.
No, I don't think it's that many.
Because it's only really for three years, right? I mean, they can't, or.
They retire before 62.
The eligibility requirements, I mean, we actually have updated, changed the language that we had in here as far as the eligibility department was. And they have to petition. To me, they're in order to verify whether or not the you know, standards have been met and the health, yeah, the eligibility has been met. You know, this particular, this past year, there was only one individual who actually qualified and was eligible for this here from when you retire, right? But as far as the total numbers, we'll get those, but it's not the 15 to 20 mark period that we had in the past.
Under that, under that number one eligibility, is it any of those, is it, or it has to be? So, I mean, if they can retire at, say, 58, can they take advantage of this until they're 65?
62.
No, they have to be 62. So it could only be really, they can only get it for three years. Okay.
That's where I was coming.
Yeah, because it used to be.
It used to be, it used to be broad when they, if they could retire at 45, 50.
If you hit your 85 points, 55.
Yeah. And then they could stay on till 65, which can obviously be a burden for, I mean, I mean, it's a nice benefit, but I, I don't know what other company or business does that, you know? So I mean, at least this minimizes it down for, for three years.
That's the language that's wanted to hear in terms of recent negotiation processes.
Okay. So between age 62 and 65, the college pays $400 per month for a premium for those people.
And then depending on which, correct me if I'm wrong here, but depending on which plan that they sign up for, single, family, whatever.
Right.
Then they would pay the difference.
Right. Okay.
Again, part of the, like you said, was meeting all the criteria because when I retired from here, I didn't meet the requirement because it was 10 years in this insurance program.
Okay.
I've been here 10 years, but with my wife working at the city, I've been under hers for a few years. So.
In this past year that we've had all of these people who we deleted down, I guess you would say, they went to early retirement. How many people were in this category between 62 and 65?
Those that.
We were, we, I'm glad to see them retiring.
Those that were eligible that applied and that were approved.
Say again?
The one.
That's what I thought you said.
So I think what the, the summary is, this doesn't apply to very many people right now. And it's doable the way it's written. Okay.
The way the language is and now it is, yeah.
Yeah, it seems, seems a little bit more geared towards, you know, it's not like you can just come in and take advantage of that right away or, you know, there's a lot of, a little bit more criteria.
Not as much of a line bill.
Yeah.
That's what I was worried about because that number three, I didn't realize it required the person to be at least age 62.
Yeah.
So.
That changed three or four years ago.
Yeah.
Or five years ago, something like that.
Okay.
Right after I retired.
I, I'd like to ask some, just tell me what they are on page J of the agreement or on 46 and I'm assuming that CJ is criminal justice. Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. And then the gallery director, would that be the Mercer Gallery?
Mercer Gallery.
This is really.
Right. And, you know, keep in mind that even though we have them in the agreement, doesn't mean that they are automatically assigned. So, you know, there are several that are within here that we may not assign, even though they're in here, but if they are assigned, then it gives the annual pay that would accompany that if it is assigned.
Okay. If you ask the person to work overtime, you kind of expect to pay them.
Correct.
At least on the CJ part, yes. And I know that as far as codes, they have a competition team and the balls. So, yeah, I'm not, she's not questioning, you know, it's been a lot of hours.
Look at the.
Yeah.
One clarification.
Any other questions or comments about the negotiated agreement? Glad you guys got it all worked out and yeah, everyone on board?
I too like the grievance.
Where it's at.
Procedures and policies. I think it's real clear. Good job.
So I have an understanding on page 61, some of users for the retirement, the 403K. The requirement of a $50 contribution by a professional employee, they have to put in at least that much, be contributing that much.
If they want the college to match it, they have to put in the first 50.
So I can't put in 20 and expect the college to put in 100 or something? Okay.
I think that's all down in the last few years.
Faculty members actually get 100, $100 matched if you put in 50.
Okay. Well, this is all kind of new to me.
I'll make a motion to accept DNF on the consent agenda.
I second it.
Okay, we got Dave. A motion for approval of DNF of the consent agreement. Marilyn seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And we'll do a roll call. This is Blake. Aye.
Marilyn, aye. Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
You still have Shanda?
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Confirmation of monitoring reports. We start on two of them. It overpassed the.
75.
75. Okay. The first being workforce development, that's the, on an annual basis. Workforce development will be responsive to the community economic development and employer needs. CEO's interpretation is there for all of us and the data, of course. One thing that I can say, just in working with Ryan over the past two years pretty closely, is I think we've certainly been on top of being out there and what the community needs and, and not only what they need, but anticipating what, what's, what's needed or what's going to be needed. And, and obviously some of the programs that we're trying to get going and, and have gone going is a clear example. Of course, that's on the data that Dr. Ruda had supplied. So anyone have any comments, questions, concerns about this monitoring report?
I don't know that there's anything more that you can.
Right.
I mean, it seems like we're doing a lot.
I think we've got, I think hands are full. I mean, honestly, there, I mean, you know, there's just, and it just takes time for some of these programs. So, no, I think really well. Anybody? Almost. No? Okay. And then the A2 biannual board job description, number six. And that is, the board shall monitor the outcomes and professional conduct of organizations associated with Garden City Community College, i.e. the Garden City Community College Endowment Association and the Bronx Buster Athletic Association. This was put in here recently and then we've assigned board members to each of these. We've always had one on the Endowment Association, but then recently put one on the BAA and just to keep us apprised and, and because of because of audit issues and, and tied to the college, even though we don't have control of it, we need to be at least apprised of everything that's going on. So it's to my understanding that both our representative Shanda and Dave respectively for their roles are, have a report or have a little bit of a update for us. For purposes, I just, Shanda, would you mind going first, just because you're on the phone and in case we lose you or something, we can always get you back?
Sure. I found the mute button in time this time. The, the endowment financially is, is progressing quite well since they've changed their strategies with investment advisors and considering COVID going on. It's very pleased to see what financial reports they've got coming in, holding, holding well and regaining well. And they did move the Mole Scholarship reception to a virtual reception. So that's kind of some of the things they're having to work on now is adapting their fundraising activities to our COVID environment. Part of that is moving their direct mail campaign. We used to have senior volunteers come to campus and stuff envelope. Of course, that's not a great idea this year. So it looks like those mailings will be delivered to the seniors where they will fold letters and stuff and send from there. And they're working on some changes for Phone-A-Thon because of course, having a room full of students together every night, making phone calls isn't going to work. So they're looking at some social distancing alternatives and, and fewer callers in the room and, and hopefully can still make both of those kind of end of the year fundraisers go off successfully for them. So. Any questions on anything?
Shanda, I, we, do we, do we have numbers? I mean, how did the, how did the auction end up faring out? I mean, did we do pretty well? And, and are they looking at that being a possibility just going forward as, as that or something new? Do we have anything?
Pleasantly surprising numbers. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but they, they were pleased with the net profits off of it. And they're considering going forward, maybe doing some kind of, of hybrid where there's certain things that are online only, but still trying where there's certain things that are online only, but still trying to do some kind of live event when, you know, the timing allows for those type of events to, to go forward. But it worked really well because it allowed others that weren't local to be able to bid on items. And of course, expenses were considerably down, so the, the net profit worked out very well since there weren't those expenses involved in it. So if they can find some way to take even like the big items, the Africa trip, some of those things online for a, a longer course of bidding to a greater audience, they're, they're looking at that.
Good enough. Anybody have any questions? No? Thanks, Shanda. Dave, for the BAA.
Pardon the length of this, but I'm used to giving long reports from my past employment, but. The BAA Board is still recruiting new members for the Board as well as conducting meetings in a professional manner and reporting all rules and regulations. As with everything else, COVID nineteen pandemic has created problems for the BAA Board. They have wondered if they would be able to meet their financial responsibilities, mainly scholarships. Board members were starting their annual sponsorship member drive when the pandemic started. They're going along and getting the donation needed when it was decided the fall sports would be moved to the spring. This long put a damper on the raising of funds for the organization was, which was counting on ticket sales concessions and sponsorships. They did decide to go outside the box and get creative on raising funds. They met with representatives from E-Team Sponsor, a fundraising organization similar to what the Phone-A-Thon does. It allows for all teams and the student athletes to solicit funds from friends and family members. And the Board did approve this method. It'll start soon. Annual BAA golf tournament was moved from the spring and scheduled to be played on October tenth. They have around twenty-eight teams so far, but also have room for a few more if anybody wants to play golf. They're also looking into electronic ticket seating program that would let the public choose their reserved seat. However, they will, you know, people that's had their reserved seats forever will still get their seats. Which would allow athletes to have more time to attend to other duties, so. They're hoping all these activities will help in meeting their responsibilities throughout the year. That's all I have. Any questions?
What? Did they meet their goals last year for scholarship?
I don't think they did, but.
So we're starting behind and?
But we did meet with Ryan and they've come to sort of an agreement on what they need to try to catch up.
Yeah, with the E-Team Sponsor there, that's, that's part of one of the new strategies is that each team is going to have goals that they're going to be set with there as far as attaining on the E-Team Sponsor. So the way the E-Team Sponsor works there is, is that it's really kind of a crowdsourcing app. So every student that's on football is going to give five names, family, friends, somebody from back home that they think would help to raise money for the program. They give this name and the number to E-Team Sponsor and then E-Team Sponsor goes out through email, through text messaging, begins to send out a, they first send out a pre-drafted letter that says, you know, so-and-so from the football team is raising money for scholarships or for whatever the, the ask is for. The crowdsourcing helps to be able to do follow-up on that fundraising ask, and so individuals that receive this message can go out and, and electronically pay, so if they want to give funds towards this program there, then for scholarships, they can pay by credit card, electronic check, however it may be, and it's attributed back to that student to show that they've been working towards their goal and it's attributed back to the team or the program's fundraising goal. It's a new initiative and a new effort there that's helping to turn this conversation on to students to help.
I believe they paid a small fee upfront, but anything that's borrowed by this, all the dollars. They're not taking a percentage out of each student. Which the difference between it and the Phone-A-Thon is you've got more people calling, putting in names and hitting their relatives up. So they are trying to think outside the box and obtain more funds to meet that goal of build that scholarship fund back up and pay the.
Yeah, and I think the other part of it there too is, is taking the fundraising outside of Finn County. I mean, fundraising, you get so inundated, I mean, businesses, individuals, I mean, it's the same people being asked over and over by multiple organizations, so this way it takes it outside of the region, outside of Finn County and really helps to be able to kind of broaden or expand where it is that the financial ask are coming from.
The student doesn't have to make the ask.
Student does not have to.
Just provide the name, the EA, is the one that makes, E-Team makes the, the ask, okay.
I believe they'll only send out three, recommend, or three letters or texts or something, so they're not constantly.
Being bombarded.
Yeah. Arresting these people.
So as a board, and we're looking at this process, and I'm glad that they're thinking outside the box and doing different things, but as a board, if they don't make their goals, what, how do we handle that? How does the college handle that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I, I think that's where we, you know, because again, we have, and, and same thing is following. I mean, they have to be putting up their end of the job, I mean, to be associated with the college and, and, you know. So I don't know, consequence wise, I mean, I think we were more concerned as if BAA, I, I know when we put this in, I think we were really concerned that possibly if, you know, an organization said BAA was doing something that the college wasn't
Correct.
condoning or, or that, that was against our policies or, or not something that we necessarily seen eye to eye on that we had authority to either dissolve or, or go away from. I think from the financially side of things, I think, yeah, you know, kick them in the rear a little bit, but, but also, I mean, we I, I don't know how much we have to.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the one thing I would say, and I don't have the exact numbers as far as where their, where their accounts are right now, and I forget that for you. The one thing that I would say is up until the last two years, so for the, for the two years previous up until last year, BAA had not contributed anything towards scholarships, so the scholarships were paid entirely by the college. Last year and this year, BAA has contributed towards paying the scholarship fund, so. Have they covered it in its entirety as far as what the athletic scholarships are overall? No, but there is money that is being contributed and they're still building their reserves and still building their, their finances there at the same time as well, so. You know, I, I think the, the question you ask is, is relevant there, you know. They're much more financially stable and you can get those exact numbers for me there, but the other side of it is, there is that they're also contributing to what it is that they're bringing in as far as scholarship.
I would be hopeful for it because when, when we were doing the endowment Phone-A-Thons and, and the student teams that were in there, it was amazing how much money they were bringing in. They were calling their parents, they were calling their aunts and uncles and friends. I mean, that, that was so amazing, particularly the meets kids, the rodeo kids and so forth, how much they were bringing in, so I, I think it's a good approach.
My, my concern and, and I, I hope we're not there, but I also, you know, I think in the past we've talked about is, 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 is there are ends to a BAA, is it, you know, we have endowment and we have BAA and sometimes, you know, somebody's given to endowment and they don't understand why they give to a BAA or vice versa, or, and, and I just, I think that both work well and as long as both are being supported and, and contributing. But we also have to keep conscious that maybe going forward in the future, that the togetherness coming together and, and forming just one, whether that's under the endowment or something. I, I mean, I realize we don't want to talk about it, but it, you know, like I said, I, I just you, you know, I mean, if one's not holding their way, we've got to, we've got to be at least effort conscious. I mean, hopefully, like I said, they keep, keep bringing in the money and, and keep funds and everything, but I don't, I mean.
Look at Dodge, they're all under one and it's a mess.
Well.
I think, I think to give a rough estimate that they have around eighty-five to ninety thousand in their fund. And, you know, it was going up pretty good until they hit, and most of the sponsorships and stuff are like ticket.
Okay, yeah, and that's fine, like I said, I, I, again, I, I, I just don't want one organization being hindered so bad that, you know, we're not, we're not.
I, I think you have to look back at the process, the procedure, the way the Endowment Association was started, was funded, was not through the school, it was through supporters and they were, they were, they were, they were big name and, and more and more we get students that have benefited, they've moved away, they continue to contribute. When you look at the number of memorials that are designed, I would never want to combine them. The history is there.
Two separate entities.
Right.
One entity is for the payment of athletic scholarships.
Right.
Well.
The other one is covers everything else and, I don't know, you're going to create more problems.
I'm not saying we're doing it, I'm just saying that we have to anticipate if something doesn't, I'm, that's all that I'm saying. I, I don't agree that we need to go forward in, in that, I'm just saying that, you know, if something isn't working and if we see something not working, we need to be.
But when you look at the four-year schools though, their, their foundations, their associations have nothing to do with trying to take care of the shortfalls that would happen in the university or in our school. I would.
No, I, again, I.
Of course, my, my, my days on this earth are probably limited, but I never want that to happen because I am well aware of what, what the community did for this school when they established it and why they established it.
The problem that came to in when they went to unlimited out-of-state scholarships.
Yeah.
And that's put a real bind on the BAA because they were paying for the out-of-state scholarships, but they had limited it. At one time it was ten football, five basketball.
Yeah.
And then it got up to out of hand, and that's what put the bind on the BAA.
The Endowment Association did help because if, and that's when there were, there were limits to the award based on how what the athlete graduated with, they had to have a three-five at that time to get anything else besides the athletic. So that's where the Endowment Association came in and they awarded presidential scholarships if they qualified, and those were the only students that could. I know there was a case of, there was a student from Sublet and the person in Sublet wanted that student to have that scholarship. Well, he couldn't have it because he didn't graduate with the required grade point. So what we did in that case is the endowment covered up to what the scholarship did and then the athletic department then came in and paid the, the rest. But the, the, like I say.
They're all, are monies coming into the endowment that are specified for a specific sport.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'm being on the board too, I may go outside my supposed to, you know, guidance thing, but if something comes up and I think that, you know, Dr. Ruda would not approve it, then I make sure that they know they probably ought to get it approved. I either get together or whatever, meet, greet the thing, social that they was going to have, said we need to put it out with him. And he said no. So. I think it's, it's, it's going the right direction.
Okay, and that's what I just want to know. I just want to make sure that it is in the right direction and.
Proving that.
Okay.
It still needs more of that board members.
Right. Okay, very good. Item B, the review of monitoring reports, we've got two, the executive limitations, they're both biannual, number seven and number eight, they're on page nine of your policy governance. I'll read the heading of the general executive constraints. The President shall not cause or allow any practice activity decision or organized organizational circumstance which is illegal, imprudent, or in violation of commonly accepted businesses and professional ethics. And then, so number seven is, the President shall not allow for purchases between ten and fifty thousand without first giving consideration to local, and that's Finn County businesses with a maximum ten percent premium. And that was last approved in twenty sixteen or updated in twenty sixteen. I'll read the second one and then we can discuss on the. What's up? Yeah, page nine. And then the number eight is, the President shall not initiate new programs or retain existing programs without consideration of cost effectiveness and overall value. I think number seven was what we had kind of discussed last time and, and I think our, our biggest concern was not so much the, the, the purchases of ten to fifty thousand, but whether or not my concern or my, my thought is, is are we, is that ten percent still adequate to meet the local needs or are, are, are local needs that much higher and we're never giving them the benefit of, of that, of that job or that service and, and I think we kind of, we kind of looked at everything and it, it appeared to be well within reason and, and not much of a concern that we're not hitting that threshold or, or not making that threshold.
I think the one statement that you added or that we wanted to talk about was for purchases for, from grant-directed funds, that we needed to add that in there, that that should be excluded, am I right, from the, the local premium? So. I had two suggestions as a, a second statement on number seven, purchases from direct, purchases from grants, direct, purchases from directed, purchases from grants. Directed, oh, there it is, purchases directed by grant funds are excluded. Numbers from the local.
Pretty, yeah, yeah, pretty concise, very to the point.
Purchases directed by grant funds are excluded.
Is okay with wording on that? That works. And then, as number, that's all for seven, right? I mean, that's all, and number eight is pretty straightforward. Any, any suggestions or any wordage change up? I think, you know, again, it's as concise and, and clear, and I don't think there's really need to, to muddle it.
I agree.
Yeah. I agree. Okay. Okay, I'll take that as a consensus and we'll go ahead and move on to item five, other, we have no open comments listed or signed up, so we'll move on to President's Report. Dr. Ruda?
Yeah, just following up, Dr. Ross here had mentioned about enrollment and just wanted to give you an update as of this morning. We track enrollment on a, on an every morning basis, but as of this morning, we are point one-nine percent down from where we were at last fall. So when you put this into context and perspective, a week before the fall semester started, we were twenty-seven percent behind where we were at last fall. So, you know, within a three, three and a half week timeframe to be able to move the needle to where we are point one-nine percent behind where we were at at this point in fall two thousand and nineteen, I think, tells a very, very strong story as far as the work and the effort that's gone in to be able to close that gap. The emphasis has been placed on. As far as the work and the effort that's gone in to be able to close that gap and the emphasis has been placed on enrollment. So, the only thing that I would say is that, you know, these are just preliminary, these, you know, these are moving targets, moving numbers. We do have census coming up here in a couple of weeks with the lock in the, the numbers as far as a picture and time for the state. But our enrollment is ongoing, we have enrollment, actually had another session that started today, we have another session that starts in October. We have another session that starts in December, so it's ongoing and we're, you know, we're continuing to work. And we've moved the needle on the enrollment. Also wanted to, I just. Draw attention, so we've initiated, I've initiated a, a new weekly blog, which is a. Session that's called the President's Desk, we initiated this just as a, a new effort, kind of an ongoing effort to be able to have. Ways of getting information out across campus on social media. And really just kind of give you more of an introspective way of looking at who our employees are on campus, what brought them to campus, what brought them into their careers. And really just kind of getting a, a sense of what it is that in their roles that they are looking at doing for. Continuous improvement and kind of future planning there then as well, so we have had three sessions. First with Rodney, Chief Dozier, then Kurt Peterson talking about the newly funded. Student support services grant, and then this past week had Ally Griffin, our new head athletic trainer. So this will be something that we do every week and just bringing on different employees, students. They bring in community members from time to time, but really just kind of getting a sense of who individuals are and a different way of getting information out there. Through electronic meetings as well. Think you're safe to say that CNN or Headline News is probably not one to be contacting me anytime soon. An anchor, that's my calling on that end there, but been, been fun to, to work on, on things with employees on that end. Would like to just remind you, so this Friday, we will be having the observance of Patriot Day here on campus. That'll be at nine AM on the flag poles here on the north end of this building. So we urge you to come, we'll have a ceremony there to observe Patriot State this Friday. I did want to highlight, I know there's been a little bit of news about this, but I'm excited about Denham Rogers, I don't know if any of you remember Denham. When he was here, he was a track athlete with us and was actually a national champion in the heptathlon. But this past month, he was, he's been back in town here for last several months. Has been working with a new track coach on training and has been here in town, he'd actually qualified for the Olympic trials. And then when the Olympics were pushed back until next year, now he has to re-qualify, but he is. He's of a pretty special caliber as far as his, his skill sets, but. Had a chance there when he was, when he was here in town, we went out to breakfast, Colin and I did with him. Just to catch up and talk with him, and he had mentioned that he is. They've announced plans to where they will be opening up a Denham Rogers Athletic Club in Monrovia, Liberia. This is, this is mission work, his parents were actually missionaries over in Liberia, but they are building. A athletic club in his name over in Monrovia, Liberia, to be able to work with disadvantaged children. Provide necessary physical, intellectual, emotional, and social knowledge to excel in life. So I think that's, that's pretty, it's a pretty cool story and a pretty touching story and definitely a pretty special young man. But he's still competing down at Houston Baptist and then he's gonna be trying to re-qualify for the Olympic Trial Service next year as well. So just wanted to share that. Last couple of things. Last week, Governor Laura Kelly held a press conference and announced some plans that will be taking effect. Starting tomorrow that impact education overall, K-12 higher ed. Within that press release, she mentioned that, starting, starting tomorrow. The Kansas Department of Health will begin to release names on the KDHE website of educational institutions. And businesses that have with education, it's in the educational institution that has five or more active confirmed cases. That are associated or attributable to that educational institution, so. If we at Garden City Community College were to have five active confirmed positive cases of COVID. All this is reported through the county health to the Kansas Department of Health, then there would be, there will be a list starting tomorrow. Of any institution, whether it's K-12 or higher ed, that meets that criteria of having five or more. And then private businesses would be if they have twenty or more cases that are contributed or attributed to that particular business. So, you know, in that, in that vein there, we've had ongoing meetings with Fannie County Health. Actually had a follow-up meeting there this afternoon with Colin Grease with Fannie County Health. And, you know, just talked through, again, a lot of this, we believe we've taken right steps. We believe we've taken proactive steps and continue to, to do the right things. But wanted to have a conversation with her just on how it is that we would handle things here locally and feel like we have a very. A very good working relationship there to where decisions that need to be made here locally between Fannie County Health. And Garden City Community College will be made, will be made very. Very robustly, but in accordance with the right, you know, with the right decisions that we need to, to remain open there as well, so. You know, my fear in all this area was when this, when this press conference came, and I think it's a lot of. Lot of individual fears, you know, what, what's the repercussions if your name is listed on this website? And so that was part of the conversation we had with Colin today is that it's, it's more of a public awareness than it is anything. It's more or less just drawing, drawing public awareness to where high, high outbreak areas may be. But it does not mean that there is likelihood that you're going to be closing or anything like that. Because there's a lot of other factors that go into those decisions. But anyways, I just wanted to bring that to your attention there that there is, isn't. We don't anticipate that our names won't be gone there tomorrow there, but, you know, again, that's something that I just don't want you to be blown aside on there though.
Is it, so in the bigger universities, is it just the university name or is it gonna be? Which fraternity, which sorority?
To me, I feel like that's hip, but almost violation, I mean, I, I, I feel like that's getting, I mean, for that individual, if they're going to get tested. At the college or something like that, I just, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
My understanding was it just follows thing for now, for a couple of weeks and then we're gonna start listing people.
That's my understanding as well, is it, is it just be the, the name.
Not individual people.
Yes.
I just don't know how they can, I mean.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna get specific to fraternities, sorority.
Right, I mean, KSM reported all that, right?
Yeah, I just don't understand, you know, five people and twenty in businesses.
And I think, you know, I mean, the other thing you can, you can look at this from a lot of different lenses there as well, but. Five cases at Garden City Community College is considerably different than five cases at the University of Kansas. It's a lot different than five cases at Tribune School District, you know, but that's the, that's the barometer. That's what we're getting measured on and that's what they will be making there, and that'll be something that is updated weekly on Wednesdays every week going forward, starting tomorrow.
Okay.
Especially if they take out the people that's recovered. Yeah, just like now they say that we have, you know, two thousand people or whatever, eighteen hundred in Fannie County.
Correct.
How many of those recovered? Good point. You know, that, that's a total amount, I believe, from the front, the first part of the COVID, right, pandemic, so. How many do we have now?
Really suppose we'll just have to see exactly what we need to, like you said. I, I know their idea is not to necessarily shame or to, it's just, I, I don't really understand. Why the point to go, yeah, I, I mean, but I suppose we'll see.
I think we should do everything we can though to still protect.
Absolutely.
Students' names.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And if that means, you know, opposing Governor Kelly's EO, then we'll do it, or at least I think.
Well, like you said, it, it comes down to, I, I really think hip, but, I mean, you know, especially if these students. Had came on campus and they're getting tested, I, you know, I mean, that's your medical, I mean, it's. I, I just don't see how they can oversupersede that and say that, and that can be posted on a public website, you know.
Yeah, institution's one thing there, but when you start getting brand new, it's two. Don't see how that, how that'll pass the test. And then the last, just last two things just of updates, so tomorrow, we will be hosting Leadership Kansas here on campus. We're going to give them a tour of the John Deere Building and talk about the expansion and the public-private partnership that we have here. John Deere's himself and Gatewinger, we'll be meeting with them tomorrow afternoon. And then they also have stops at Comestoga Energy and American there as well. So we thought this was a good tie-in to a lot of their other stops that they had while here in Garden City. And then just as a reminder, October tenth, I know it was mentioned, but we will be having a BAA golf tournament, so. Four, four-person scramble, so if you care to go out there and be able to show your golf skills off there, we're about to have you out there.
Oh, yeah, sure, okay, thanks, Dr. Ruda. Incidental information, of course, as always, every month, there's a puff of information. Provided to us by all departments or by the administration, anybody have any. Comments towards the incidental information that was provided to us this month? No? Fannie County Economic Development Committee, Dave, report from you.
Again, they're just still working on getting that building on Third Street up for the babysitting childcare facility. And they're working with a couple of private individuals to bring some more housing developments in towns.
Very good. And then Beth, KACC.
On Saturday morning, August twenty-ninth, at eight o'clock in the morning, we had a Zoom conference. It was a lot of fun on a Saturday morning, particularly when that's the day your cleaning lady comes, I was in the basement. It was, they tried to keep it to an hour, it was just a little over, mainly the business meeting, the latest updates on funding. And then the COVID impacts on the Kansas Community Colleges, there was one thing that, that I wanted to mention to you. The KACC organization is a non, not-for-profit, it's a five oh one C dash four. So evidently, they got some of this payroll loan program, but because of the C four. They were not eligible, so it was sent back, and the next meeting is hooray, hooray, it's another Zoom meeting. On a Saturday morning, December fifth, at eight o'clock in the morning, I will be in the basement again.
Very good.
Oh, you've heard this too.
One thing, if we go back just on incidentals, that I did want to point out there, that Mark had in his incidental report. We will be having a paramedic class up in Concordia there in the spring semester. You know, a lot of, a lot of work goes into that, kind of navigate getting approval from another community college to offer classes. And then you have to get state approval, but we have, have gained both flat counties and cables to do that.
That's awesome.
Good job.
Yeah, always nice to fill that need when another university or campus doesn't want to or can't operate it. And obviously, there is a need and so, yeah. SGA, I, I know we don't have a president. Currently, we're still trying to navigate through all the activities, Dr. Ruda and I were discussing that, so no report from SGA. We have faculty senate here tonight.
Andrew, do we have Pearl?
There she is.
Sorry. I was waiting for it to just pop up and I realized I had to take off. I apologize, um, yes, we did, we met two weeks ago, we started working on finishing some things from last semester. Because of COVID, it was a little frantic in the spring and we didn't finish out some of our things like picking new members, that was the major big one. And then working on some policy revisions, we were working on the survey administration policy, so we finished that talk two weeks ago. And then we're also working on just revamping the appeals policy, like great appeals and all different kind of appeals, so we're still working on that. But a lot of the work was done last year, we just gotta finish it up, but like I said, the major thing was trying to pick new members. We had four positions open, so four of our members are moving on and we needed to fill them. Last year, we were not, we only had one person that had volunteered or had been nominated, so we were not looking so good. We asked for new volunteers at the beginning of this year and we actually got eight, so that was really great because we have way more than what we needed. Voting happened last week, so I think it closed at, at the end of last week and the new members will be announced on Friday, so I'm very excited. The people that we have are really good, so I'm sure we're gonna do a lot of great stuff. For the new business, we were just talking about just stuff that have come up, like just five minutes between classes. It's not that much time to get everybody finished up, to get everybody to the next class, to do all the sanitation that needs to happen between classes. And, and answer all the questions, so that was one of the big major points, other things that we also talked about were just kind of ideas. Of what might happen in the spring and things like that, like what the schedule may look like, so not a lot of new things and new business. Mainly, it was focusing on trying to finish things from the spring, and so far, I don't have a lot of new things coming up for this week. Other than, like I said, still working on that appeals policy, like revamping it and making one big, good appeals policy. So that's really all I've got.
Any questions for Pearl?
When you're talking about that appeals policy, what's that in reference to?
Anything that deals with instruction, so I think the big one would be a grade change or grade appeal of grades. Or anything, I think there was three different things that we were trying to combine into one solid thing because there was different. Statements and different policies and the student handbook and just trying to unify it all as one single thing.
Okay, thank you.
We're good. Any other questions for Pearl?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pearl.
You.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, ownership link each, anyone?
Yeah, I want to bring out that, you know, I think everybody got it, but the commendation for letter we got from Pamela Herman. Great job that everybody did when they, she got her son into the college here, dropped him off and. She was part of the complexity of the process with COVID, I just wanted to express that I was very impressed with everything you enacted to ensure as much safety as humanly possible. Yeah, great job.
Yeah, yeah, it was nice, nice comments and, and nice to see that, like I said, bringing on all those kids that we did. As, as smooth as possible process, so. But yeah, that's.
It's always great.
Always, always good to hear, yeah, that's right. Anybody else?
I get a lot of people making comments about how's the college doing and all that, nothing but support and appreciation. I'm not hearing anything negative from anybody that wants to complain about the college or any way we're handling things. Particularly during the difficulties that we're going through, they, they all seem to understand that and take it in stride. they all seem to understand that and take it in stride, but I don't hear any negative comments at all.
I don't either.
I had my neighbors just express some of their support for Dr. Ruda and Lee's handling things the last couple of years.
No, let's not get carried away.
I'm just saying what she told me.
I don't even believe this shit.
Yeah, this is quite a contrast between previous administrator and this one.
That's a nice comment out at the track range the other night, and I won't tell you the name, but a lot of compliments on you, Ryan.
Team effort, for sure.
Very good, yeah.
Like I have
Sure.
an unrelated topic I wanted to ask about.
Okay.
Earlier, when we were talking about our monitors, we were on the policy title for board job description. Now ever in my history here, have we looked at this as far as evaluating ourselves and our, in our behavior and how we conduct ourselves and if we like the job that we're doing? So if it's okay with you, I was going to kind of explore a self evaluation tool of our own service, production, how we're doing.
Yeah, self evaluations.
Yeah, self evaluation. It is, I I just briefly looked at some stuff on the web and in that one book that you provided for us, Ryan had a section on self evaluation, so I'm gonna, I'll talk to you Blake and I'll bring it up in the future.
Think even, you know, it's something that I think I know or talked to Pamela, that's coming on for our retreat. And we can kind of touch bases with her, you know, because again, she really stressed the idea, we need to be self evaluating and and and, you know, how how that goes about whether we does things, but yeah, I think bouncing off some ideas and getting an idea from her too. I think it's, I think it's appropriate on on multiple levels, absolutely, I think, you know.
Certainly, if you guys think of some items that you want to throw out and talk about it, please write them down.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even have a problem with having Ryan evaluate us, upwards evaluation per se. Since he's our employee.
So great, yeah, great, great idea, and like you said, I know we, we, it was, I I think Ryan and I had talked about it time ago and I know, but yeah, we probably do need to get that kind of moving forward on something like that, so very good, yeah, we'll have further discussion. Upcoming calendar dates, of course, the nine eleven observance here this Friday. And then our board retreat the following weekend, really important that everyone attends and 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 we'll have a good chance to discuss a lot of things and and hopefully answer any questions too, bringing the board a little closer together. Next Board of Trustees meeting, October thirteenth, six PM right here, and then November tenth, well, we've got all the way out to January.
No.
Much on the calendar, so.
Well, I know, yeah.
No gates to go through.
I know, usually sports, you know, is is hitting it hard, but but yeah, as the kind of the big changes, you know, of course, once Thanksgiving break occurs, then then the rest of it's going to be either finished or followed up online, so so campus will be a little, little bit quiet in December, but anyways, those dates make aware of and and other than that, we don't have any executive session tonight. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to adjournment. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Ryan, actually